Call to order the Claremore Cultural Development Authority.
Yep.
Not noting the row when it is sworn in.
We're going to do this very again first.
Prior to the call.
Prior to, got it.
Yeah.
Ignore that.
So, welcome everybody. We have Judge Wilks here to swear in our re-elected counselors and newly-elected counselors. So, for those of you that are family members of a counselor that's already here or a new counselor during the process, feel free to stand up, take photos, whatever you want to do. This is a family-friendly event. So, with that, I think we do them all at once, correct?
Yep.
Would Counselors Cottom, Michael, Bruckerhoff, and Callender please...
You can stand right there if you need to.
And the rest of you want to join Judge Wilks?
For me, please, right here.
Right hand.
And repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Brian Delamore.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
The Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And that I will not knowingly receive directly or indirectly.
Not knowingly receive directly or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable thing.
Any money or other valuable thing.
For the performance or non-performance of any act or duty pertaining to my office.
For my performance or non-performance of any duty pertaining to my office.
Any money or other valuable thing. You can't mess this part up.
Yeah.
For the performance or non-performance.
For the performance or non-performance.
Of any act or duty pertaining to my office.
Of any act or duty pertaining to my office.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
I further swear or affirm.
I further swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As a City of Claremore Counselor.
As a City of Claremore Counselor.
Claremore Public Works Authority Trustee.
Claremore Public Works Authority Trustee.
And the Claremore Cultural Development Authority Trustee.
Claremore Cultural Development Authority Trustee.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Anybody wants to take pictures with your family up here?
Everybody back here by Brian.
Is this a time for you to get your pictures with your family?
I have a picture with my family.
Okay, Tim, come on over. So we don't have to wait on Brian.
Wilks, guys.
Thank you. Thank you for being patient.
Counselor Bruckerhoff, if you and the mayor or anybody would like to take a photo down in front of the dais with your family, then please do.
All right, so this is Isaac. He's nine. Leah, she's five. Ethan, he's a year and a half. And my wife, she...
I'm thirty-nine.
Her place is safe.
Look right here.
Did you get some with just your families here?
Get some without me in there.
Oh, okay.
And we'll make sure you get them all.
How did you?
If he has to carry the little ones around, you might want him to bring them to all the council meetings.
You want one pack.
Can you scoot over just... there we go.
Congratulations, Counselor.
Is this real this one? Now we're gonna start. Call to order the Claremore Cultural Development Authority meeting. Sarah, please note the row. Cottom, here. Foman, Michael.
Here.
Callender.
Here.
Long.
Here.
Bruckerhoff.
Here.
Holby.
McSpadden.
Here.
Irwin. If you would stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation by Pastor John.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You might want to wait just a second.
Turn to your feet and worship prayer over the railroad tracks. Everlasting God, we love you and we worship you. God, we know that you are the source of life and you are the author of salvation. God, today we rejoice in this beautiful day that you have made. In First Samuel, Chapter three, we read this short, beautiful prayer that the young boy Samuel prays. He says, "Speak, Lord, for your servant is listening." And so tonight, as our wonderful City Council meets, I ask, O God, that each member would be able to hear and listen to your voice above all the other voices out there. For your voice, O God, is good and life-giving. God, your voice is a voice of grace and truth. We ask, O God, for your kingdom to come, and we ask for your will to be done in Claremore as it is in heaven. Finally, Lord, I want a prayer of blessing and peace for each of our council members and for our mayor. Thank you for their service to the people of our beloved community of Claremore. So, God, to you be the glory now and forever. All of this we pray, and all of this we ask in the strong and powerful and glorious name of Jesus who is the Christ. And everyone say.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Get him for every minute.
I know.
One retainer.
Oh, wait a minute, Tim said.
I know. I was giving him the stink eye when I...
Okay, do we have anybody signed up for call to the public?
Yeah.
Okay. So, before we start... well, you don't know. People are here to see the people being swayed. Before we start, there are some guidelines that have to be followed. So, we will have our city attorney, Adam, go over that with you and the new counselor.
Thank you all for being here. As the ma... I'm trying to talk loud enough. Can everyone hear me, even in the back? Okay. For all of you that are here to speak, this is a public meeting called under the Open Meeting Act. And because of that, the council has allowed for all members of the public to speak in three-minute increments. So, as you can tell, there are a lot of you here. Each of you who has signed up to speak will have three minutes to do so. You will hear a timer go off at the end of that three minutes. That's your cue. Your time is up. It's time for the next person. Because this is a public meeting under state law, the council can hear your comments, but it can't respond. So, if you say things in the form of a question, they are prohibited by law from responding to that question. Other than that, just big-picture things, let's keep it civil, no obscenity, nothing like that. We have children present. Otherwise, I think we're ready to get started.
Annabelle Kissinger.
Hello, I'm Anna. I am the president of Claremore Pride and the founder of Pride in the Park. Thank you all for allowing me to speak with you today. First, I want to acknowledge that our event has caused concern in the community, and for that, I am truly sorry. I've hesitated to speak until now because I respect this council's time, and I know that you have many pressing issues to address. But it's clear that there is a profound misunderstanding about what Claremore Pride and Pride in the Park represents. So, as a fellow Claremore parent and a business owner and a lifelong community member, I'd like to clarify our intentions. Like many of you, I was raised with faith and values. I understand the fear that pride is forcing an agenda, but that's not what this is. This is about giving kids like mine and so many others a simple message. You are loved for as you... who are, for as you are. For some children, that message is a lifeline. Studies show that LGBTQ plus youth face higher rates of bullying, depression, and even suicide, not because of who they are, but because of how they're treated. Our festival is a response to that pain and not an attack on anyone's beliefs. I've heard the word is that drag is inherently inappropriate, but drag at its core is theater. It's a celebration of creativity and storytelling. Our performers will follow a strict PG-13 guideline. No explicit content, no revealing costumes, just vibrant artistry. This isn't about shoving anything down anyone's throats. It's about showing that self-expression can be joyful and respectful. Claremore Pride in the Park is a family event designed with the same values as any other community gathered: connection, kindness, and fun. We've partnered with local churches, businesses, and parents who believe in a Claremore where no one has to hide or feel ashamed. Our mission has not fallen on deaf ears. We have over 900 people interested in attending, forty vendors and allies showing up to support. So, if you're so worried about protecting children, I ask, what's more protective than teaching them to respect people that are different? What's more Christian than loving thy neighbor? To those who disagree, we hear you. We're not asking you to change your beliefs only to make space for ours. You do not have to attend. Pride isn't a threat. It's an invitation to build a stronger and a more compassionate Claremore. So, I leave you with this. If your child came and said, "Hi, Phil alone," wouldn't you want a community that offers them hope? That's all we're trying to do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Tim McHugh.
Good evening. I'm Tim McHugh, pastor at Grace United Methodist Church. First, let me say I respect everyone here tonight. I know this isn't easy. Some of you are sad and are angry by the misuse of Scripture for personal agendas and the absence of love. But tonight, I want to speak plainly about something that matters deeply to me and to God, and that's love for all people. If we believe in Jesus, truly believe in Jesus, then we have to not look, not just at what he said, but what he did. Again and again, Jesus moved toward the people others moved away from. People are not problems to solve or projects to take on. They are beloved children of God, created in his image, worthy of dignity and love, not because they earned it, but because God commands it. I know standing here may challenge expectations. I know I'll be labeled, criticized, misunderstood, and that's okay. I'm not here to argue a position or draw lines. I'm here to lift up Jesus. Jesus never called us to be gatekeepers. He called us to be witnesses. And if standing here means standing in the love of Christ, then I gladly stand. Jesus didn't see gay or straight. He didn't see clean or unclean. He saw sons and daughters. And that's what I see in our LGBTQ plus neighbors. Not outsiders, not rejected, but beloved children of God, already embraced by grace. When I die and I meet Jesus, I want him to say, "Tim, you did some dumb stuff, but you did some good stuff. You truly love my people. Come and have a seat at the table. The Methodists are in the front." I don't want to hear them saying, "Tim, remember Jimmy, the man you condemned? I had plans for him, but after how you treated him, he never came back." And then watch if Jesus turns away. Some ask, doesn't Jesus call people to change? The truth is, absolutely. Jesus calls all of us to change and grow deeper in love, justice, and mercy, so we become who God wants us to be. His invitation is about fixing people. It's about embracing them and walking with them towards wholeness. And that journey always begins with love. In John eight, which I watched last week, last time, was motivated to speak because it was destroyed, obliterated. Religious leaders dragged a woman caught in adultery before Jesus. They didn't drag the man, they dragged the woman. It always takes two. They didn't care about her story. They wanted to speculate. But Jesus said, "Let the one without sin cast the first stone." And one by one, they laughed. When it was Jesus and the woman, he didn't condemn her. He said, "Neither do I condemn you. Go and sin no more. Go and live in freedom." That's grace and truth wrapped up in love. If Jesus refused to condemn, how dare we? If Jesus stood between the vulnerable and judgment, we must do the same. Now, LGBTQ plus neighbors don't need more exclusion. They need what Jesus offers us all: love. They need compassion, belonging. So, yes, Jesus would go to the LGBT plus community, not to fix them, not to fear them, but to sit with them, to love them. And if we claim to follow him, we must love with no conditions, because that's what Jesus did for us. Thank you.
Jose Villafon.
Villafon, yeah.
Sorry.
Sorry. It's totally... Good evening, and thanks for listening to me. Actually, I did not plan to speak. I just came to support Pride of the Park. But then I was looking at Claremore's vision and mission right behind me, and I kind of thought, I just don't understand why we're even here tonight. Vision, a vibrant community that honors our heritage and provides everyone the opportunity for growth. And then the mission, to see the people of Claremore through principled leadership, unified partnerships, productive relationships. Find it real hard to pair that up with what all this opposition to Pride of the Park has. As the first speaker said, right, this is just an event to support a part of the community. There's not much beyond that. We all need support. We all need love. I see in God, we trust on the wall, and as Pastor Tim here just said, "I don't know what Jesus you've been reading about. I don't know what Jesus you know, but I just don't understand why we're here tonight. It's kind of frustrating." But if we live the mission and the values, the vision of Claremore, and we want to get better, and we want to be better, then we have to take those steps to understand each other, to accept each other, and to get on with it. Being in opposition is... it's a long, hard road, and nobody really wins. I think we've learned that from countless wars and other horrible things that have happened in history. So, I'm just here to support Pride of the Park and to help Claremore actually learn and live that vision and mission. I think it's a good one. I support that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Thanks, Tim.
Thanks, Tim. Jaden Austin.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jaden, and I'm fifteen, and I'm in eighth grade. I was adopted at the age of seven, and ever since then, I've learned all about the way every single person on this earth should be treated with kindness and respect. My grandfather, Keith Austin, has always said to me since I was little, "You don't have to liken, but you can still treat them with kindness." And so, that's what I do. May I also mention, my dad is a pastor, and as God says in the Bible, "To love all, no matter what, no matter their sins, or if they have betrayed you or hurt you." Still, he says to love and treat others right. I truly don't see a problem with others liking the same gender or even being born a gender and wanting the opposite. I see nothing wrong with that. But even if I did, even if I did, I would still be respectful and kind. I would never say hurtful things to make others feel less of themselves. I would never say hurtful things to make others think badly about themselves or maybe why they're still here. No matter what, treat people with kindness and respect, because at the end of the day, that's what Jesus would do. Remember, you are hearing this from a fifteen-year-old girl. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Hancock.
I'm not a fifteen-year-old girl, and I'm glad to be here. Thank you, Claremore City Council, for the opportunity to speak today tonight. My name is Jennifer Hancock. I'm a resident of Claremore, a wife, a mother of two grown children, a retired teacher, a member of Vertiges United Methodist Church, and a member of Women in Power for Democracy. I am here to stand with the Claremore Pride Board members and other allies to offer a perspective of why we are proud to gather at Claremore Lake in June. As for me, I am the mother of an adult gay son who never had to question whether his family, his parents, his sister, or his grandparents were for him. My son grew up in the church, went to schools in very conservative places, graduated from college, and worked very hard to succeed in his career as a college professor, and lived his life authentically as a queer man. I have also worked hard to live my life authentically as the mother of a gay child. I learned not to stay silent as others malign my son or others in the community. I attended pride festivals in Oklahoma and Texas. I also led a chapter of people in Texas supporting gay and transgender families. I found that the more you can learn about other people, the better we all are. As my son was growing up, there was no grooming him to become gay, but there was also no shame when he came out to us while in college. Years later, he told his father and I that the argument about being gay as a chosen lifestyle is ridiculous. Why would anyone chose to put themselves through the hate of homophobia and transphobia? LGBTQIA and two-spirit individuals are born this way. I, for one, will be there to celebrate those sacred individuals and their families in June.
Ellie Lang.
Hi, my name's Ellie Lang. Good to see you all again. I wanted just to thank you guys, and I wanted to thank the Pride Organization for what you're doing. I was one of those Claremore kids that needed that lifeline. Didn't have it, and seeing kids get to have it now, thank you guys. And I think also the opposition receiving this is very proof, and life's proof, it's the meaning of the purpose. So, thank you so much for everything you do. It's you guys for giving them an opportunity to speak. I appreciate you. And to those watching online who don't feel safe to be here because of some of you, you are so loved and cherished, just as you are, just as you are, by us, by God, by everybody. And I'm so sorry that some of these people are hurting so badly about themselves and other things they don't understand. They have said things to hurt you. They are not things. They are not a reflection of everyone's feelings, of our faith, of us. You are so loved. We are so loved. And I want to leave you with this. It's Romans, because there was a lot of Scripture that shared, kicked, and used out of historical context, which was interesting, parasyia and bigotry, I would call it. And I want to use this the right way today. It's Romans 12:10, "Love each other with genuine affection and take delight in honoring each other." Thank you for creating a space where individuals can be honored for who they are. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Reverend Alexis Inglebrack.
Inglebrack.
Inglebrack Villafon.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I am Reverend Alexis Inglebrack Villafon. I have a Master of Viny degree, and I am an ordained minister within the disciples of Christ tradition. I also live in Claremore, and I am here to make two points and a request. First, comments that use God and Scripture to argue against a pride event at the park and that condemn people who identify as members of the LGBTQ plus community do not represent every Christian, nor are they representative of the only way to responsibly and thoughtfully interpret Scripture. I'm so glad that that has already been proven this evening. This is not the space and time to go into why, which brings me to my second point, which might surprise you. Whether or not a pride event is held at the park does not and should not depend on whether or not you or I support it on theological grounds. The Bill of Rights protects the rights of citizens to peaceably assemble and protects our freedom of speech. And fortunately for all of us, it also protects citizens from the establishment or prohibition of religion. from the establishment or prohibition of religion. A religious service was held at the park yesterday, and I imagine the participants and I might not have been in complete theological alignment, and that's fine. I didn't go. Gator Fest is an event with Facebook posts I find to be insensitive. That's also fine. I also don't have to go to that. I don't have to attend, and I don't have to view the posts. And with all due respect, I confess to be confused by religious why religious leaders pray at the beginning of government meetings when Jesus specifically tells people not to pray publicly, like the hypocrites do in Matthew 6:5. Frankly, I find it to be offensive to my understanding of the purpose of prayer, yet I survived what happened earlier. That was also fine. And I have the right to decline if I'm asked to publicly lead public officials in prayer during a public meeting, just as others have the right to accept. And I'm going to close with my request. My understanding of what it means to be a follower of Christ requires me to move in solidarity with the outcasts, with the marginalized and the oppressed, and to ask those in power to recognize the humanity of each citizen. So within my role as a citizen and a minister, I ask that you set aside any personal preferences you may have toward the Claremore Pride Organization and fulfill your responsibility to protect the rights and liberties of each resident under your care. Thank you.
Sabrina Tyre?
Tyree.
Tyree, sorry.
Yeah, you're okay. Hi, I'm Sabrina. I'm one of the youth board members. At 32, I was diagnosed with an aggressive form of breast cancer. I underwent 14 rounds of chemotherapy, a double mastectomy, and 33 rounds of radiation. It was the hardest battle of my life. But I got through it with incredible support from this community. Claremore has showed up for me anyways, I will never forget. And I felt deeply proud to call this place home. After completing treatment in 2024, I joined Claremore Pride alongside my good friend Anna. I'm queer and also the parent of a queer teenager. We wanted to create a space where the LGBTQ plus youth could feel safe, supported, and seen, something that matters deeply to me. It was also my way of giving back to the community that gives so much to me. Unfortunately, I found myself having to pin not only my involvement, but my very existence of Claremore Pride. The last city council meeting's public comments were filled with misinformation. I doubt many of those who spoke have attended one of our events or spoken with our board members. I challenge each of you to come to one of our events, meet the people behind the mission. They're absolutely amazing. Claremore Pride exists to support the LGBTQ plus community, especially youth, and to offer a safe, inclusive space. Everyone is welcome. If you don't support us, that's your right. But I ask that you try not to tear us down or misrepresent what we do. Claremore is home to queer families. It's home to open and affirming churches. We are not turning into California. We are not promoting anything inappropriate. We're simply building community. From free clothing swaps to our little free library, which promotes inclusive literacy, we're here to give back. Claremore Pride isn't going anywhere. We'll continue to show up for those who need us, just like Claremore wants to show up for me. Thank you.
Kelly Coleman?
Mr. Coleman, we, we can't take gifts. This is for...
Sir, if you have a passage that you want to read, you can do that by, but council members can't receive a copy of that from you.
Okay.
Okay. Sir, there's one up here. Thank you.
In God we trust. Which God? You clearly let a Hindu come in here and pray to his God. And the first time I mentioned bringing Bibles in a stash to leave here, I couldn't because council needed it to be inclusive. Inclusive to what? Some passages, Acts 17:22, which says, "Paul then stood up in the meeting at the airbox and got the gears and said, 'People of Athens, I see that in every way you are very religious. For I walked around and looked carefully at your objects of worship. I even found an altar which is in description to an unknown god. You are ignorant of the very thing you worship, and this is what I am going to proclaim to you. Other gods require sinful.'" Acts of Worship describes it in Romans 1. Hindu, Mitri, Vrana, and Shiva, they permed sins, said in Romans 1, "In order to worship mole, he requires, he requires child murder, abortion. Veil and star require the presentation of self in a lewd and derogatory manner in order to worship them." So we see worship of self and fulfilling gratification is, in reality, worship of other gods. Now, if we teach children to worship themselves, Jesus says in Luke 17:2. Jesus said to His disciples that come to these, that cause people to stumble bound to come, but will to anyone through whom they come. It would be better for them to be thrown into the sea with a millstone tied around their neck than to cause one of these little ones to stumble. So watch yourselves. God is very jealous of who is worshiped. Jeremiah 10, verse 10. "The Lord is the true God. He is the living God, the eternal King. When he is angry, the earth trembles. The nations cannot endure his wrath. Tell them this: These gods, who did not make the heavens and the earth, will perish from the earth and under the heavens." Mercy.
Sir, thank you. Jesus comes to bring mercy to you.
Sir, thank you.
Thank you. James Gillis?
I'm in this council for, can't speak.
I need to go to the restroom.
Genesis 1:27. "So God created man in his only image. In the image of God created he him; male and female created he them." Genesis 5:2. "Male and female created he them and blessed them and called their name Adam in a day that he, they were created." Leviticus 18:22. "Thou shalt not lie with mankind as with womankind; it is abomination." Leviticus 20:13. "If a man also lie with mankind as he lied with a woman, both of them have committed an abomination. They shall surely be put to death; their blood shall be upon them." Genesis 19, verse 4. "But before they laid down the men of the city, even the men of Sodom compassed the house round, both old and young, all the men from every quarter. And they called into Lot and said unto him, 'Werele the men which came in to thee this night; bring them out unto us, that we may know them.' And Lot went out of the door unto them and shut the door after him, and said, 'I pray thee, brethren, do not so wickedly. Behold now, I have two daughters, which have not known man; let me, I pray thee, bring them out unto you, and do ye to them as is good in your eyes. Only unto these men do nothing, or therefore came they under the shadow of my roof.' And they said, 'Stand back.' And they said again, 'This one fellow came in to sojourn, and he will need to be a judge. Now will we deal worse with thee than with them.' And they pressed sore upon the man, even Lot, and came near to break down the door. But the men put forth their hand and pulled Lot into the house to them and shut the door. And they smote the men that were at the door of the house with blindness, both small and great, so that they weary themselves to find the door.'" Matthew 19:4 and 5. "And Jesus answered and said unto them, 'Have you not read that he which made them at the beginning made them male and female? And said, For this cause shall a man leave his father and his mother, and shall plead to his wife; and they claim shall be one flesh.'" Luke 17. "Jesus said likewise, also as it was in the days of Lot. They did eat, they drank, they bought, they sold, they planted, they built it. But the same day that Lot went out of Sodom, there rang fire and brimstone from heaven and destroyed them all." Romans Chapter 1, verse 24. "Wherefore God also gave them up to uncleanness, through the lusts of their own hearts, to dishonor of their own bodies between themselves, who changed the truth of God into a lie and worship and serve the creature more than the Creator, who is blessed forever amen. For this God, for this cause, God gave them up to vile affections; for even their women did change the nathsuse into things which is against nature."
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. That was the last one.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, do we have a motion to accept the agenda as printed?
So moved.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Call the roll. Michael?
Yes.
Nick Spadden?
Yes.
Codham?
Yes.
Calendar?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Bruckerhoff?
Yes.
Any items unforeseen?
None.
Current business, do we have a motion to approve the consent items as printed?
So moved.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Call the roll. Michael?
Yes.
Codham?
Yes.
Calendar?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Bruckerhoff?
Yes.
Nick Spadden?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
The motion to adjourn is second. Call the roll. Michael?
Yes.
Nick Spadden?
Yes.
Codham?
Yes.
Calendar?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Bruckerhoff?
Yes.
Call to order the Claremore Public Works Authority meeting. Note the roll. Do we have a motion to accept the agenda as printed?
So moved.
Second. The motion is second. Any discussion? Call the roll. Michael?
Yes.
Codham?
Yes.
Calendar?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Bruckerhoff?
Yes.
Nick Spadden?
Yes.
Any items unforeseen?
None.
Under current business, do we have a motion to accept the consent items as printed?
So moved.
Second. The motion is second. Any discussion? Call the roll. Michael?
Yes.
Codham?
Yes.
Calendar?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Bruckerhoff?
Yes.
Nick Spadden?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. The motion to adjourn is second. Call the roll. Nick Spadden?
Yes.
Codham?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Calendar?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Bruckerhoff?
Yes.
Call to order the Claremore City Council meeting. Note the roll. We have a motion to accept the agenda as printed?
So moved.
Okay, we got to move some on this side.
Just get it over.
Bruckerhoff? The motion is second. Any discussion? Call the roll. Codham?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Calendar?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Bruckerhoff?
Yes.
Nick Spadden?
Yes.
Any items unforeseen?
None.
Mayor's report. I was going to say something, but I think it's till next meeting. We have another meeting this month, right? Yes. I have nothing. Awards, presentations, and communications. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. A couple of things of note. A week ago, last Thursday, was Claremore Day at the Capitol. We were somewhat surprised. We knew they were going to recognize some folks, we thought, in the gallery. Senator Seifried, as, for her first presentation of Entourage on the Floor, presented a contingent from Claremore that included members of the county, the chamber, emergency operations, and the city of Claremore in response to tornado recovery. So needless to say, we had to borrow a tie for Todd Rue, myself, and Stan Brown because we were not there to be on the floor. We were there to do Capitol Day. But it was very generous. But Stan Brown, Assistant City Manager, Sean Douglas, Fire Chief, as well as Emergency Operations Manager for the city, Steve Cox, Police Chief, Todd Rue, Power and Light, and myself, were given citations, as was the city of Claremore as a whole, given a citation by the Senate and Senator Seifried, which, is it appropriate? Should I read it, City Clerk?
Read the whole thing?
Yeah, it's, it's, anyway, it just says, "Great job, you guys. Thank you." And so I, I think it goes a testament to the staff. It was humbling. The entire Senate stood and gave us a standing ovation. They understood what we went through almost a year ago in a couple of weeks. So we were very gracious and thankful for that. And then last week, I was asked to attend the MISO Conference, which is Municipal Electric Systems of Oklahoma, because we were going to recognize the 13 partner communities that came to assist us in mutual aid. Well, that was a big ruse, and they presented the city of Claremore with the Clarence Folkerson Electric System Achievement Award, presented to the city for efficient and effective restoration efforts due to the significant system damage caused by the May 2024 tornado. Very humbling. Would have been more appropriate had Todd and his crew been there, which they were. But as you know, last week was very trying for us and our power grid with the windstorm. So those guys were all here working. So, anyway, we're very grateful to our partners in both the legislature as well as public power partners across the state. And I think it's recognition that speaks highly of the community as a whole on how our citizens responded, and specifically our Power and Light crew, as well as everybody from across the board in the organization. That was a tumultuous 14 days, that first two weeks. And there wasn't a single person that works for the city of Claremore that wasn't on in some capacity working. So, anyway, that is all I have in the form of awards, presentations, and communications. And we'll get some of these things framed and hung up in here eventually. And that's all I have under that.
Thank you. Staff reports. Mr. Manager.
Other than the implementation of the commercial refuse accounts, the waste management team is on the ground. And so they are conversing and talking with the commercial account holders. So there's about 650 or 700 of those. I'm sure Jonah has received lots of phone calls. The letters went out. We have had positive response. A lot of business owners are saying, "Thank you. A more uniform dumpster." But I think they're also more concerned with what, what the fees are going to be. And that's why we have the private sector involved, is for us to get out of that part of the business. So if you have any questions on that, or you have constituency, constituents asking, please refer them to Jonah and/or myself, preferably Jonah. He'll know what he's saying. That's all I have on that. Under staff reports, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a comment. Just with the recent downpour of rain, driven by the Cat Creek Project, and just great foresight, having put effort to clean that up. Because if that hadn't been done, there would have been a lot more playing in the city of Claremore. So, well done after the tornado, all the debris that was left behind, putting an intentional effort to clean that up. You've proved done a great job.
Yes.
I'll pass that on. Thank you.
Current business, do we have a motion to approve the consent items as printed?
So moved.
Woo-hoo!
Nice!
Oh, we have a motion. Motion is second. In your first meeting, I love it. Any discussion? Call the roll. Bruckerhoff?
Yes.
Mick Spadden?
Yes.
Codem?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Calendar?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Item number two, hearing on the appeal of Compass Church LTD regarding the city manager's order that the property located at 503 West Will Rogers and 505 East Will Rogers are dilapidated, and the structures must be torn down and removed, and vote by city council to uphold, modify, or overturn the city manager's order.
I believe Mr. Polk.
Polk?
He's in the back.
Stan, if you could direct him to come up to the dais, to the podium.
The dais?
The dais? I've never heard of that.
That's what I'd...
Fancy.
Oh, thank you.
Members of the council, I'll get started just on some background of what we're here to do. So, under Claremore City ordinances, there is a procedure for declaring a piece of privately owned property dilapidated. That's set out in the ordinances what dilapidated means. And once a finding of dilapidated has been made, the ordinances and state statutes then give the city council certain powers to go in and remedy that dilapidated building. In other words, to abate the nuisance. Here, the Claremore City Council, by ordinance, has delegated its authority to make a finding of dilapidated to its city manager. And the city manager then relies on subordinate staff to make recommendations about buildings that may be dilapidated. And then that is brought to the city manager at a hearing where the property owner appears and has an opportunity to be heard at that hearing. That's what's happened here. The property owner received notice, had a hearing in front of the city manager. The ordinances were all followed. The ordinances do provide that if the property owner disagrees with the city manager's finding of dilapidation, that they then have an opportunity to appeal to this council. And that's what we're here for. So Mr. Polk is here, he's the private property owner. So he's the one that's requested this appeal, and that's what we're here for. Now, I am representative of the city manager for this appeal. So what I put in front of you is a binder that looks kinda ominous, but I promise you, I'm gonna go through it pretty quickly. I just wanted to make sure that the council has everything in front of it that the city manager had at the time of his finding. And also, there are some documents in here that you can look over yourself to assure yourself that all the proper process is followed. So I'm gonna go through this quickly, answer any questions you may have for the city.
Should we give a copy to Mr. Polk?
Oh, absolutely.
No, no, I apologize, just making sure that he had...
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, I'm sorry.
Give us a copy of what I gave to them, if you wanna follow along with us. So I will say from the outset, this binder, there's a lot of duplication simply because we're talking about two pieces of property, or two separate addresses. There's a larger building, a kind of cinder block structure, and then there's a smaller building right next door that's more, it kinda looks like a shed. Now, both of those were found to be dilapidated and detrimental to public safety and well-being. It's my understanding, and Mr. Polk can correct me if I'm wrong, when it's his turn to address the council, I don't think there's really any disagreement about the smaller structure. I think he's in the process of tearing that down, and there's no dispute that that's dilapidated. But again, I'll let him address that. But that's why you're gonna see a lot of documents that look similar. It's because some of them are from the 503 property, and some of them are from the 505 property.
Can I just ask a quick question? Of the two addresses, which one is the smaller one that you said you feel like is...
I was able to remember this, because the 503, that's the smaller number, is the bigger building.
Okay.
505 is a bigger number, it's the smaller building.
Gotcha.
That's how I remembered it.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So I'll just kinda flip through these tab by tab real quickly, and just... I'm really, I'm not gonna go through this line by line, because we'd be here till tomorrow. But I wanna get through it quickly, so you have an idea of how this decision is made. If you flip to tab one, all this is, is to show you that Mr. Polk and owner of Compass Church, which is the registered owner of this property, received notice. This is the notice that he had, that the city manager would have a hearing to determine whether or not the property was dilapidated. If you go to tab two, and this is where we're looking at the substance here. So this is a letter dated July seventeenth of 2024, drafted by Fire Marshal Jonathan Case, wherein he sets forth the rationale as to why he believes that the building is dilapidated. You'll see things like, "I conducted exterior inspection. The building is unsecure. The garage door on the south of the building is not in place. There are holes in the roof, multiple windows that are not in place," et cetera, et cetera. I mean, painting the picture with this building, really anybody can get into it with minimal effort. It's unsecured, it's open to the elements, et cetera. If you go to, I'm sorry, he makes that binding as the proof of property. Always. If you go to tab three, this is similar, but you'll see that this is about a year later, April of 2025. Building inspector, Mr. Chester, has made similar findings. Building not secure, there are broken windows, whether or not animals are able to get into the structure, open missing bay door, roof appears to have major damage, et cetera, et cetera. Again, finding that the properties are dilapidated. You go to number four, this is really the same. It's a different document, but it's the same findings by Mr. Chester, writing directly to city manager Fury, advising him of his belief that the structures become dilapidated. Number five, it's kind of a timeline put together about utilities that were provided to the service, or to be more accurate, no longer provided to the properties. You see here that 503 had no longer received power from the city since 2018, and 505 hadn't received electric service since 2001. This is part of the fact that these properties have been in this dilapidated state for years, for a long time. If you go to six, this is just simply proof of ownership of the property, making sure that we notify the right people. Same thing with number seven and number eight. Now, here, this is where, kinda, I'm a visual person, and the pictures kinda say it all. If you go to tab nine, we've got several color photographs of the property. Now, I will say, I've left these pictures in, because these are the pictures that were in front of the city manager at the time he made his decision. I've also got pictures that are date stamped today. So, yeah, just be aware, this is the current state of the property. It's not like it's, you know, suddenly become renovated in the last few weeks. And I'm happy to pass these pictures around if anyone wants to see them. But you can just, you can flip through these pictures yourself. You can see garage door windows that are all dusted out. The windows are either boarded up or not there altogether. You can see pictures where the roof is open to the elements, completely destroyed. On and off, I don't need to tell you what you see.
I have a quick question for me. This is not storm-related damage, this is in this condition prior to the 2024.
It's my understanding that it's been this way for going back ten, fifteen, maybe twenty years. Thank you. Absolutely. Now, obviously take your time looking through those pictures. I think they show what they show. If you go to tab ten, all this is, is it's the minutes from the hearing in front of the city manager where the structures were found to be dilapidated. I believe, and then, sorry, following that, are the findings of that. And then twelve is where you start getting into duplication, because we're talking about the other property at that point. Now, again, to give you an idea of the process here, what this finding of dilapidation means is that it gives the city, the city manager and staff authority to go in and abate the nuisance. In this context, what that means is that the building needs to be torn down. Frankly, in the state it's in, there's not really any use... I mean, it's gonna cost more to remodel it and get it back up to code than it would be to tear it down and build a new building. That's the point I'm getting at. So the finding of dilapidation gives the property owner a set amount of time, in this case it's ninety days, to either effectuate that tearing down and starting, or theoretically, to get it up to code within that amount of time. I don't think that's realistic, but he has that option. Or to tear it down within the ninety days and do with the property what he wishes. If at the end of that ninety days that hasn't been done, the council has the authority to, I'm sorry, the city has the authority to pay for that to be torn down. And then the cost of that tearing down is assessed as a lien against the property. But then, over time, the property owner will initially pay.
And that would be done separately?
Correct.
Two different liens, depending on the cost.
Yes.
What's this, though, commercial?
Yes. It's my understanding from the minutes of the meeting, and from having been there myself, at least at that time, the owner hadn't really decided what he wanted to do with that property. Had a few ideas, some of which included automotive repair shop and some other things. Frankly, the amount of work that it would take to get this building into a condition to where it was up to code, and could be used in any of those capacities, it's kind of an insurmountable cost, I think. But again, this is all things that led to the city manager's determination. If you all have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer what I'm able. We also have folks here from the building inspector's office and the fire marshal's office that can answer any of the more technical questions. With that, happy to answer any questions. But then Mr. Polk will have an opportunity to address the council as well.
I notice here, there's an example, like the Pink House, when they demolished that, it was fifteen thousand, so that's...
Yeah, I think that was referred to during the dilapidated hearing as kind of a ballpark of, you know...
Kind of thought contingent, yeah.
There are different kinds of structures, it could cost different amounts. But that was referred to as just kind of a general idea of what it may cost to tear down a structure.
So you're not talking thirty thousand, forty thousand?
Again, it takes someone who actually knows what they're doing. I'd be lying if I told you what that was.
Okay, thank you.
You all have any further questions for me?
So the back half basically is duplicating the second property.
It's the same sorts of documents, the same fire marshal findings, all of that. It's just for the separate matters.
Sure. Okay, thank you. You have any questions?
Absolutely.
Just had Mr. Polk.
The dais, Mr. Polk, so you can get up. Mr. Polk, you're welcome to come up and address the council if you have any evidence you wanna present, or any statement you wanna make.
This is just what I'm gonna say. So you could follow along easy enough.
If you wanna just give it to him, we can pass him down.
Pass him around?
Yeah.
How to do that?
The way you have to do that, yeah.
I think there's enough there.
We can share. Want to?
Did you get one?
I got one.
That wasted everyone.
Yeah, you want my doubt one?
Okay.
I can do it online, I was gonna take one.
That's okay.
Very misleading. They gave you this little booklet, and then when he got to the pictures, the pictures are way outdated. Those were right after, right before we started working on the building. And there's another set of pictures, they've taken more recent, but they're not in here. I don't know what, you know, is that to fool everybody? Or is that just an omission on your part, that you forgot to put the pictures in? I don't know. It doesn't matter. What I wanna, wanna tell you is that the project is being handled. It's almost daily. Something's being done almost every day. And those pictures, I can't believe you did that. But anyway, if I'd known you were gonna do that, I'd have brought some more pictures, more recent pictures. And you have the more recent pictures. You just failed to give them to everybody. And that's inexcusable. But I'm here today to discuss the proposal of the order to tear down the building. And the order is for two buildings, 503 East Will Rogers, which is also known as 500 East Patty Page, and the other one is 505 East Will Rogers. And that 505 East Will Rogers is probably seventy, seventy-five percent already torn down. And we've been working on it, and hauling off all the trash and junk. And the only thing standing on that building right now is just the front facade. The walls, the back, all of it's been hauled off. It created a lot of trash, but we're taking care of it. And it shouldn't even be discussed, because it probably will be completely gone within another week or two. And we've been working pretty hard on it. And the 505, or the 503 building, they made mention that it was a fire hazard and a hazard, fire hazard to the community. This is a, this building holds, holds some significance in the fact that it's bordered by three streets. And it's probably one of the only buildings in town that can say that. I don't know. I'm not saying that that's the situation. But I'm not aware and have not seen any buildings that have three streets that border them. And you had mentioned, the city had mentioned that it was a fire hazard to the community. And it's a long way from, when I mentioned three streets, it's a long way from that building to any other structures. And the building is concrete blocks. Now, if you've ever tried to burn a concrete block, I don't know. You know, I think it's impossible, but there may be some way to do it. But the paint, there's several coats of paint over the years on the concrete blocks. And it's all peeling and cracking. And, but, you know, anybody with any idea of how labor works knows that you can scrape those peeling paint off and repaint a building easy enough, that that's no reason to tear a building down. And also, concrete blocks are pretty stable. Unless the earth moves under them, you know, they're gonna be there for a long time. They don't deteriorate very fast, if at all. And they're set on a concrete pad, and the pad doesn't have any cracks on it, even any stress cracks underneath the building. You know, out on the driveway, you'll find some concrete cracks. But that's normal. That's not anything to get excited about. And it's no reason to go in there and tear a building down. I'm committed to bringing the building up to code and ensure that it does not pose a risk to the public. But I wanna emphasize that the building is a fine structure. It's been there a long time. It's part of the, part of the historical significance and has some architectural value. To, if any of you have been by that building, you can drive down Patty Page, going east out of town, and get a pretty good look at it. And the other pictures that were in here, it really upset me. And the other pictures that were in here, it really upset me, was when they, after the tornado came, it tore all, a lot of the windows and stuff out, and, and lifted the roof off, took the roof away. It only took the, the laying part of the roof away. It didn't take the, the roofing trusses that, that hold the roof up. It didn't bother them. It just took the cover off the top, which in effect is, if any of you have a pergola at your house, you know, over, over your patio or something, you, you walk out, you can, you know, it's, it's just trusses. There's no roof on it, no surface on it. And that's the way this building is here. It's a concrete floor, just like it'd be on your patio, and it has a pergola-type trusses on it. And we're going to cover those, of course, but it's, it's not a fire hazard or a safety hazard, or it's just a, somebody has some ideas that they want it to look different than it looks. And it, it's in the process of becoming different than it looks. And it's just, we have, the small building was just used as a, a, a storage area and had, had no electricity, had no water, wasn't used at all for any, any purpose other than just could jump in and store it. And they've got it built up in this dilapidated building procedure as, as being a danger to everyone, you guys and me and everyone, which is ridiculous. You're just so overstepped and, and for, for whatever reason there is, you just got overly excited about it. And the, like I say, the building is being worked on. And the current pictures, I urge you to drive by, drive down the street there, those pictures of the windows knocked out and, and tornado damage doesn't exist. Those were old pictures. And the, the new pictures shows it has, we, we bought chloroplast that was chemically treated for windows, for sunlight and, and stuff that is chloroplast. And the chloroplast is, is like little honeycombs. And it's, whatever, however they make it, I don't know. But it has thermal value, and it has protection against UV rays, and it's designed for replacement of brittle glass. And that building had a lot of brittle glass in it, and a tornado tore a lot of it up. But those windows have all been replaced. Drive by, they're there. And you say, oh, okay, well, that's chloroplast, that's some kind of plastic. I could tear into that and get inside that building. Well, yeah, but you don't have a key to the door to get in, and a, and a lock on the door will keep an honest man honest, but it won't keep a thief out. I could break into this building just as easy as you could break into that building. You know, I just knock out a window, kick in a door, go through a wall, tear out the sheet rock. That's, you know, and there's, there's no animals around there. I've been around that place for years and years and years, and the only thing I have seen is some bunny rabbits this spring in the area. And like I say, the, the one building, we've taken it down anyway, and it's probably, it's mostly re-down and removed. And the area still has a lot of stuff that we're tearing, where we're tearing it down. We're piling up the good lumber and the trash lumber, and hauling the trash lumber and stuff away. It's, it's a project in progress. It's being worked on. And it just bothers me that you would try to, that you would order a building to be torn down that says stout a structure as that building is.
Mr. Polk, when, when did the work on this building start? The repairs?
It's serious, it started quite a while back, but seriously engaged in it was probably last two months. Right after, right after the...
These proceedings started?
Right after winter.
Okay.
Upon notification of this hearing, they started working on the building. We have notes in this file going back 18 and 20 years of this building not being in compliance.
This spring, we hired a laborer.
So before that, the, the windows were boarded up for more than 36 months. You didn't have power in the building?
Yeah, we don't have power in the building.
Since 2018, so I understand your concern and your passion for the building, but it didn't seem like there was any until these proceedings started.
Okay, what?
It didn't seem like you had a lot of concern for your building until these proceedings started.
Well...
That's the appearance from the records in that place, that it's, it's been there for a long time.
I can see your interpretation, but that's not true. We've been doing it a little later time, and I've been doing it myself. But as soon as spring came and we had better weather, I got a helper, and he's the one that's doing most of the work.
I have, I have multiple concerns about this. One, I, I see where it is cinder block, I see in the pictures lots of wood in the roof and the walls and other places. It, it appears to me there's easy access.
You didn't see any roof in the walls. There's no in the walls. The roof, when the tornado took the surface of the building off, it left a bunch of crappy wood that they had on the, on the trusses that...
Are those wooden?
Somebody in the, in, in the past, but that's not the...
Are those wooden trusses? And you mentioned a pergola, pergola-like structure, are the, is that wooden?
Pardon?
You mentioned a pergola and the, and the trusses, are those wooden?
The, the trusses are, are wooden. And on those trusses, the, the damaged one by force that you're looking at, the rotted ones, were on the surface of that, of the trusses. But the trusses are sound. There's only like three or four trusses that will probably be replaced.
So my point is, there's, there's wood in there, you mentioned it's not a fire hazard. It is, there is wood in there. The, the cinder blocks aren't going to burn, and nobody's living there, but anybody could break in. If it's a coal mine, they could build a fire.
Well, anybody could break in anywhere.
Yes, sir. And they could.
Every, every building in this town can be broken into.
Yes, sir.
You know, but it is locked, and it is secured. You would have to break in to, or force injury to get in it. You can't just walk up there and walk in that building.
Sir, earlier you'd mentioned that I didn't provide the up-to-date photos. I have them, dates stamped today. The only reason they're not incorporated in this finder's...
Yeah, no, they're not here. I thought that that might have been a, a personal omission on your part.
No, he, when he was up there, he offered to show these pictures.
I got these an hour before I left for Claremore today, and I just simply didn't have time to incorporate them. But these are the photographs, and they're being passed around.
I'm, I'm willing to work with the city to, to get a mutual solution to, to the problem. I just don't think that, that you can just forcefully come in with a hammer over my head and say, we're going to knock your building down because we don't like the way it looks. Or we don't like the way it used to look, and we'll show you the pictures of the way it used to look.
So the smaller...
But the current pictures will have, will have windows in it, the chloroplast windows that I, I spoke of.
So the smaller building...
I don't know, you know, you're going to do what you're going to do, but...
Mr. Polk?
I got to think that it's against my will, so...
Mr. Polk, I had a question for you. So the smaller building, you are already demoing it, right?
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm here...
The smaller building, you said you're already demoing it, you're taking it down and carrying it off?
It's more than, I would say it's 70, 75% gone.
But, but you are going, that's what your goal is, is to get it torn down and hauled off?
We're finishing, well, yeah, we're in...
So it'll be nothing left.
It's a work in progress.
But well, if you have 90 days, you should be able to get that done.
Every week, we've made some progress on eliminating that building. And it's, like I said a while ago, we, just the, the front door and the, and the front wall is about all that's left. There's, I mean, there's still some standing studs and, and a little bit of roofing to come down, but 70, 70 to 75% is already done. And, and most all that trash that accumulated has already been hauled off. There's still some there, and there's still some to, to manufacture, you know, when we're tearing it down. But yeah, that building is, shouldn't even be discussed, it's, it's on its way out.
So, Adam, correct me if I'm wrong. So if, if we do this, he'll have 90 days to finish tearing down that building, and then there'll be nothing to be done with that property. But then he'll have 90 days to either get the other building up to code or get it torn down, correct?
No, no. The, the dictate was, we're going to tear the building down. If you don't tear it down in 90 days...
Right.
We're going to tear it down.
That's what I was saying.
That's incorrect, if you'll look at the letter.
That is incorrect. He does have, and I mentioned this during my presentation, if within 90 days of the city manager's finding, he's able to get it to code, that's perfectly acceptable to the city.
Right. Or tear down the property.
All I, yes. All I said is, that seems highly unlikely, given the state of the property.
Well, all I'm asking is that you don't tear my building down. I will remove the smaller building, which I most always already have, and, and I will finish up working on the larger building, which I have already started on. But if you think you need to tear it down...
Can you get it done in 90 days?
And I got to figure the...
Mr. Polk, sorry, he's...
Can you get those things done in 90 days?
Can you get those things done in 90 days, is what he asked?
Say it again.
Can you get those things done in 90 days? Can you make the repairs to the building and finish demolition, demolition on the, on that other one?
Well, we're sure trying. Giving our best shot.
So Herb, I know he can't hear, he can't hear, probably hear me very well. I'm, I'm wondering on the building that would have to be brought up to code, not the one I turned down, does he have the financial means to do that?
The question is, do you have the financial means to bring the building up to code, the one you don't want to tear down?
In 90 days.
I don't, I don't know what that financial statement is.
Does he have money in the bank, or what, to get loans?
We're working on it, and we, we think that we will be able to bring it up to code. I don't have the list of the codes, I don't know what they are.
He'll have 90 days.
Counsel, I think it'd be helpful if we had someone experienced with the code.
But if it's, if the code is, it won't start a fire, or it may spread to neighboring units and catch them on fire, or there's, there's a den of wolves living underneath it, or, you know, I don't know what all those codes are. But the building will be habitable and useful if we're able to work on it and without the threat of you coming in and tearing everything we do up. If you're going to bulldoze it, then, you know, it's hard for us to get the motivation.
Jonathan Cates.
Yeah, Jonathan.
I'll leave it with you.
Mr. Cates, would, would Mr. Cates come up and address the council, just to give the council a sense from your professional perspective, what it would take for this to get up to code?
The bigger building?
So, so with the bigger building, right now, with no roof, for me to go forward, I'm going to ask for a structural engineer's report, because there are part of the cinder blocks that are cracked or possibly coming off with the upper band around the top. Fire code does permit, whenever I have questions about structural integrity, what we've adopted in city ordinance, I have the ability to ask for that help through code. So not knowing whether that building, even though it's cinder block, I'm not sure with the style of that cinder block, if those trusses have anything to do inside there. So on the design side, we'd have to make sure that the structural integrity is still there to be able to do that. Moving on from there, once we're figured out if it's structurally sound, then they'll have to figure out trusses, roofing, electrical code, but we still don't even know what the intended use is going to be. So depending upon what the intended use is, there's different allowances that the code requires based off occupancy type. So depending on what, what that is, that'll be the direction that we're able to do that code analysis based off of that engineering report.
Jonathan, are the windows that he's put in there up to code?
I don't, he said they're chloroplast windows, they're a...
Not all of them, no. There's a couple, there's a couple of chloroplast windows, yes. And that picture, that old picture you had in here of, of boarded up windows, they've been replaced.
I'm not familiar with chloroplast in the fire code. I could be wrong, but I've not color crossed it.
Take a look and see.
It's a thick plastic.
It's campaign sign plastic.
This particular chloroplast is designed to replace the brittle glass there.
Mayor, if I may to, just for everybody's identification, when we, when we left the hearing and we were very specific on the ruling, it was made clear that he had 90 days, typically 30 is what our ordinance calls for. Now, keep in mind, this is almost two decades of the same issues with this building, not just the last 30 days, three months, six months. Secondly, we had a conversation at the time, Mr. Polk agreed, and immediately upon that, the next day, there were four sale signs, because frankly, the value of that property is in the land, not the improvement or the structure. So he had put it for sale, I believe, the next day or the, or the day after, when I drove by there. As you know, just for the public's identification, there are current pictures from today. I took photos today. There is not much, if any, change in the condition of the building whatsoever. And I will tell you that you could walk up to the building and get into the building without much effort still, right now. And I do agree with...
Well, how would you do that?
I, I do...
How would you get into that building with no effort?
It, it's very easy to do.
Kick the door in?
No, sir. You have two chain link panels leaning up against open garage doors that, as big as I am...
One garage door that was eliminated by the tornado.
As, as big as I am, if I wanted to, I could just slide right in.
Has, has six-foot-high fencing.
So the, the concern is, so the council's also aware...
You'd have to tear that down or pull it down, climb over it, you'd have to do something physically. You can't just walk in that building.
I would ask the fire marshal more concern, address...
I'll leave it with you.
Not, not the fire itself...
You guys figure out what you want to do.
But the issue of what danger first responders would be in, because there have been people and transient individuals.
Thank you for your attention, and I'm sorry that I disagree with you, but I don't think that building needs to be torn down.
Make the most of it.
And, like I said, the, the improvements on the building are ongoing and have been going on for, before the designation of dilapidated.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Polk.
Things are getting better, but they're at a standstill now, as, as long as you've got that hammer over our head.
Okay.
And I appreciate you taking the time to listen to me. And I hope, hope that you can see a way clear to not force us to make that, that probably, what, 60 days now. If we don't make that 60 days, then you're going to drive in with the bulldozers and, and wipe us out. But thanks anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Polk.
Just, one second.
Yeah, it's up to you, Mary. Yeah, we've made that very clear.
Okay. Just, I think sometimes it's important that people understand, because you're here, you're just hearing this for the first time, and for clarification and historical reasons, this has been going on... this has been going on for years, so this isn't a sudden thing. And when you, when you find that out, it puts it into a different light, I believe. So I just want to make sure people understood that. So we have a motion, second, any other discussion?
Counsel, McFadden, I just want to clarify, your motion was to uphold the city manager's decision.
Correct, thank you.
I second that motion.
Then we have a second, okay.
Mr. City Attorney, he can sell it.
Absolutely.
And then someone else has to take the burden of it.
Sure.
Absolutely.
Or less than that now.
So the building could still stand if someone else does the job to make it safe.
They'll have to bring it up to code and et cetera, yes. Or finish the demo.
No, it's the same date.
Same date, yeah. Any other questions? Call the roll.
McFadden?
Yes.
Callender?
Yes.
Cottam?
Yes.
Michael?
Stay.
Long?
Yes.
Bruckerhoff?
Yes.
Item number three, discussion and possible action on ordinance number 2025-6, annexing an approximate 3.72 acre site located south of State Highway 20 and west of South Dunlap Gap into the city of Claremore. Mr. Clifton?
We're gonna have to wait pile up there.
I say. Do we need to set a timer for you?
Yeah. I'm gonna sum them up.
I know it's three of them here, I think, or two.
They are geographically co-located, I'm gonna sum them up in, basically items three and four.
Okay.
I'm gonna sum them up in one. So, one item, item three is the West Track, item four is the East Track, one is 3.72 zero acres, the other is 1.92 acres. Two separate property owners, both pertaining to the city of Claremore, two come into the city limits. This particular action, or these actions rather, are a little bit non-traditional, I would say, generally speaking, when someone annexes into city limits, it's a piece of property that immediately abuts the city limits. These two properties meet the alternative definition found in Title 11, Section 21-102, and that basically allows land that is separated by an intervening strip of less than four rods wide, a highway right of way, or a railroad right of way. They are basically, you just mean contiguous to city limits. So, just to give a little bit of clarity there, for those that have not seen this type of action before, in accordance with state law, public notice was published in a newspaper of general circulation, once on April 12th, and a second time on April 19th. The owner of the property intends to develop this into kind of a mixed residential development, and staff did recommend approval. I'll take any questions you guys have.
Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion to approve and second, call the roll.
Michael?
Yes.
McFadden?
Yes.
Cottam?
Yes.
Callender?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Bruckerhoff?
Yes.
Cottam?
Yes.
Callender?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
McFadden?
Yes.
Item number, thank you, Mr. Colley.
Thanks, Colley.
Discussion and possible action on resolution number 2025-4, supporting continued participation in the Oklahoma Main Street program, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This is actually a resolution for Main Street, so the Claremore Main Street organization is a part of the state Main Street organization. This is simply a requirement every year for them to maintain some sort of accreditation through the state and national Main Street programs. As you know, the city partners with the Main Street organization contractually, and they put on Food Truck Thursdays, they do Dickens on the Boulevard, and I believe our other contractual is the St. Patty's Day, as well as a Taste of Claremore, and some other things. So, we actually will have Steve Robinson come and present, probably in July, just to give an update on the state of Main Street. He's doing a great job. This is simply a resolution that they need to present with their annual reporting requirements that we still think they're doing okay, and that we support it.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
A motion to approve and second, any questions? Call the roll.
McFadden?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Cottam?
Yes.
Callender?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Bruckerhoff?
Yes.
Item number six, discussion and vote to approve or reject entering into executive session for the council to confer on matters pertaining to economic development, including the transfer of property, where public disclosures of matter discussed would interfere with the development of products and services, and public disclosure would violate the confidentiality of the business. Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, call the roll.
Michael?
Yes.
Cottam?
Yes.
Callender?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Bruckerhoff?
Yes.
McFadden?
Yes.
Can we have Maggie? Maggie?
Maggie, yeah. Hey, Adam, Adam, could you get your mayor over? This is ridiculous. We're gonna have to hold.
I'm the counsel adjourned into executive session to discuss an economic development project. While in executive session, the council discussed the project with city manager John Furrier, assistant city manager Stan Brown, and with executive director of SEDA, Maggie Froman Knight. While in executive session, no other matters were discussed and no votes were taken.
For the record, still SEDA.
Yeah, it always been SEDA in my head. I don't know if mine has been stricken for tonight.
Motion to table.
Are we going to take it? Okay. Motion and a second to table. Call girl.
Meg Spadden.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Cottam.
Yes.
Calendar.
Golly.
Long.
Yes.
Brucker Hall.
Yes.
Mayor, add me. Clarification, is it insinuated as table to the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I definitely have to pick it a new one because of any verbiage, but I guess that's in the resolution itself.
The next agenda will have it on there when it's correct.
Okay. On number 10, discussion possible action to authorize the mayor to create an advisory committee made up of less than a majority of the members of the city council and any other officer or employee of the city to explore options for developing and implementing an annual performance review process for the city manager position and to make a recommendation to the city council for its consideration at a future meeting. Wow, that's a mouthful. Basically, you want to just start the process for the city manager group annual review? That way we can make that something we just do over here?
I don't. I'm in opposition to this because we already have a performance review we do every year. We also have multiple tools and implements we can use to do that. We have done that in the past. This language, it discusses using officers and other employees of the city. And I think the city manager's position has always been, since the charter was started with the city manager, that the council is his boss or her boss. And therefore, being that he is an employee, none of his employment or anything related to his employment or his personnel file should ever be discussed with anyone outside of the city council and possibly the city attorney and HR. But I think it would be a great disservice to the city manager and frankly, a little bit of an adication of our role as the city council to do this and where we would invite other people to even discuss his performance.
Well, I agree.
So then...
I didn't have that verbiage in there for me. Adam put this together. And I think that the general, maybe we need to reword it. The general purpose would be to have a ad hoc committee that would just be of city councillors. And it would be just the city council doing the performance review.
The city council.
When we do the whole city council like we've always done, I don't understand the purpose of having fewer people to be on.
No, the whole city council would. Let me replace this. So if we have an ad hoc committee, we can do research and create a list of questions for all of us to answer. The same questions for the whole city council to answer. The whole city council would be doing the review. But just the ad hoc committee would just be creating the questions to ask the city council about the performance.
We already have a tool for that. It's in the file. You can speak with the city attorney and he can give you the past iterations of that. But I don't, I still don't feel that...
And that can be utilized with the ad hoc committee just to...
May I just say that when this agenda item came up, I did, keep in mind, I've only been sitting with the council for maybe two years now. But I did learn after talking within the firm that Brian, your former city attorney here, did work with the council in years past with the evaluation process. And we actually have copies of those in our file that we could look at. So that may be something the council could refer to. Respectfully, when you first raised this, it was actually broader than it's currently written. And I narrowed it because I did have concerns with possibilities that, you know, citizens could be on that committee.
Yeah.
And I don't think that's appropriate both from, you know, management standpoint and also from a legal standpoint. I think it would be very problematic for this council to delegate its authority. So I just wanted to clarify that.
And I agree. The wording is not what I had wanted or what I originally thought. To me, it was you have an ad hoc committee, you do some research. If there is something previous has been used, you can look at that, look at other communities and what their performance evaluations ask and the process they use. Formulate the process. The city council then is given, everyone's given the same performance evaluation to do independently and then brought together and collated. And then we talk in executive session and go over it, just like you would evaluating another employee.
Well, I understand that. And that could be allowed for in this agenda item. The original agenda item was written this way, but it was also written broadly enough that anyone could be appointed to it. And not only that, it was written in an ambiguous way to where not only would it involve the processes of carrying out the city manager evaluation, but also the actual carrying out of the evaluation. So I narrowed it to clarify that if the council were to approve this, it would strictly be a committee to discuss the process or the criteria by which the city manager would be evaluated.
Right.
And then the committee would bring that process back for the council as a whole to approve it or not.
Right.
I just want to clarify how this...
If you want, we can ax this, reword it, and bring it back next time. Because what I'm hearing is different than what the intention is.
I guess I don't understand the intent because the current process we have now, every city councillor gets to provide input either in executive session or in the past, we felt the need to have a more formal process. I'm not willing to give up my role and responsibility and getting feedback and input into that. I like the process we have where we come together. John is not present for the first part of that. We discuss openly as a council and provide our input. And I think it's a very good evaluation process. So I'm not understanding the need to change what we're doing already.
Okay. I disagree. I don't think it's, since I've been up here, we've not had what I would consider...
It's three trains in one meeting.
That's a long meeting.
Yes, that's a long meeting.
I feel like there's a need for a more formal and a little bit, a little bit, a more in-depth evaluation, like asking just general questions or specific questions about the role of the city manager. Not John, just the role of the city manager, how they performed, meeting goals, specific goals. And we all, that's all, the questions are, you know, correlated, we all answer them. And then the answers are correlated into like a point system. A lot of the ones I've found other communities do similar to that. It's a point system. You rate each item, each question on like a one to five or a one to 10, whichever scale you decide to do. Those are all put together. And then so each question, the answers would have a cumulative point to it, points to it. If that makes sense.
I would encourage the council and the mayor to go and seek out the tool we already have and read that because it is just what you described.
Okay. That'd be great. I've been here for two years and we haven't done it. That's why I brought this up.
There hasn't been a need to do it. John's doing a tremendous job. And we have used it in the past with the previous city manager and it was necessary. And, but we just haven't had the need to use it.
I understand. But I think it's just more a matter of it's our responsibility to carry it out.
Earl and I are saying we don't want to advocate our, and this is a little bit of adication because if you have only a few members, because you have to make it less than corn, then those few members of the council are then determining the mechanism in which we use to perform, do the performance review. I would like to make a motion to strike this and you can address it at a later date, but I make a motion to strike this now.
Set it.
Motion second. Any other discussion?
Michael?
Yes.
Meg Spadden?
Yes.
Cottam? Long?
No.
Brucker Hall?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Set it.
Motion adjourn second and discussion. Call the roll.
Michael?
Yes.
Meg Spadden?
Yes.
Cottam?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Brucker Hall?
Yes.